Good evening, everyone, and welcome to another episode of Turn Left. I am your host, Indiana's own Dana Black, coming to you live. Yes, all the way live from Black Pearl Studios, where we talk about Indiana politics from the left side of things. Well, it has been a kind of a chill week this week, leading into the long holiday. But let's all remember what the long holiday is. It is Labor Day. And if no other year, this is the year that we should be celebrating Labor Day. UPS has a new contract. Starbucks is turning up contracts. And the railroad folks are working on their contracts so that we can keep transportation and logistics still moving. But labor is stepping up all over the country and in every industry and saying, nah, bruh, we not finna take it. Listen, even the writers and the folks out in Hollywood are on strike. Labor, I mean, look, the wealthy folks, I know y'all think y'all did it all by yourself. But if you don't have people executing your plan, it's just a plan. So this year, I need everybody, you know, to take an extra moment to think about labor, labor unions, and the importance of labor in our nation, and making sure that everyone has a fair access, you know, livable wages, which we still need to work on. It's not a done deal, please know. But healthcare and all the benefits that our labor unions fight for. And if you are in an environment where you don't have a labor union, see about getting organized. Get organized. Get your people. Get your people together and get organized because labor is what makes this country move, right? Think about the pandemic and the essential workers. It wasn't the CEO that was the essential worker. It wasn't the CFO. It wasn't the stockbroker. It wasn't the person managing mutual funds. It was the person that was delivering your groceries. It was the person that was driving the trucks. All right? So this Labor, this Labor Day coming up, I need everybody to just take an extra minute to say thank you to labor unions all over the country for making sure that people are treated fairly. Because if you don't make people do things, they won't do it, right? You kind of have to make folk do act right, because people don't be drinking that act right on purpose. All right? What's going on? Well, something else has got me a little fired up. NPR Network reports Dr. Caitlin Bernard's case before the Indiana Medical Licensing Board is officially over after both sides opted not to appeal the board's decision. The board voted in May to reprimand Bernard but did not prevent her from practicing. Bernard provided abortion care to a 10-year-old rape victim from Ohio last year and then discussed the case with the Indianapolis Star. Targeted by Attorney General Todd Rakita, Bernard was eventually reprimanded by the state medical licensing board for what is said was a patient privacy violation, though national experts disagree on whether the physician broke any privacy rules. Rakita declared victory after the board's decision, though the panel rejected the most serious charges the attorney general leveled against Bernard, with the board president calling her "a good doctor." Both sides opted not to appeal the licensing board's ruling. In a statement, Bernard said her time is better spent focusing on providing care. She also warned against using the outcome of her case as precedent for politicians to attack doctors who provide care they personally disagree with. See, I'm gonna tell y'all something. This is the part that everybody wants to skip over. A 10-year-old was raped and was impregnated by her rapist child. I cannot imagine on what universe you exist in that you believe that a 10-year-old, a fourth grader, should deliver a child. Her body has not even developed enough to give birth. Fourth grader, she doesn't have hips yet. She hasn't haven't developed real breasts yet. Her body has not developed, but y'all want to say that the 10-year-old rape victim, we aren't even gonna talk about the fact that she was violated by some clown who thought it was okay to touch this little girl. We don't talk about the victim enough, and not maybe we shouldn't because she deserves her privacy. She deserves to try to have whatever normal life she could possibly muster after being violated at 10 years old. But our attorney general, this clown, Todd Rakita, wanted to sue her, went on Fox News, tried to humiliate her, because what? He needs some cool points from the Fox maggot crowd? You see, this is not the type of leadership we need. He is not the type of leader we need in the State House, leading and being our top law enforcement officer, because he would rather prosecute the doctor who potentially preserved this 10-year-old girl's life for cool points, for style points, for political points. He's on the wrong side of this. And although Dr. Bernard took the high road on this, she didn't have to. She could've came for him. But y'all, next year, this clown is on the ballot, and the rumor mills have already started on who might be running in that seat. But I'm not finna say nothing, because I'm gonna let them tell their own story. But what I'm telling you is Todd Rakita is garbage, and he needs to go bye-bye. The idea that he would prosecute a doctor who saved a 10-year-old rape victim's life is beyond reprehensible. Let's get rid of this fool. Let's get rid of him. All right. The Louisville Public Media reports, "Schools across the state of Indiana will receive nearly $30 million this year to spend on safety measures, with 2/3 of the funds, 2/3, going toward law enforcement and school resource officers." Governor Eric Holcomb announced on Tuesday that the state approved all secured school safety grant applications this year due to an increase in funding from the Indiana Department of Homeland Security. Those school safety grants represent another example of historic investment in public safety. Holcomb said in a press release, "I am pleased we are able to financially support every school that identifies safety as a top priority. The grant provides matching funds, up to $100,000, to schools. The money can be used to hire security personnel, purchase safety equipment and technology, expand parent and student support services, conduct site vulnerability assessments, and more." This year, more than 450 schools submitted about 600 safety projects. The largest spending category is for school resource officers and law enforcement officers. More than $19 million, $19 million will go toward placing SROs and LEOs in schools, support resource officers, law enforcement officers. So, I mean, I guess this is okay, because, I mean, they won't do anything about semi-automatic weapons. I guess this is okay, because they don't care who actually receives or gets a gun, because we are now a permitless carry state. I mean, I guess this is like a Band-Aid on a broken leg. I guess. But we don't ever really want to really address the issue. The issue is that there are too many guns, too many unaccountable guns, and too many assault weapons that people can get their hands on, that walk around shooting people. Shout out to the folks in Jeffersonville who booed down Ron DeSantis when he came to express his concern over the racist shooting in Jacksonville, Florida. Shout out to the people who booed him and said blood was on his hands. See, all these people have created this crisis, and they've created these problems where our students have more active shooter drills than they have tornado drills in Indiana. They don't care. They don't care. They don't really want to address the real issue, and that there are too many guns in the hands of wrong people. We could talk about mental health and all of that, because I believe that that is a real issue. But bottom line is, people with mental health issues don't even have to have a permit to get a gun in Indiana. They don't have to apply. You have to get a license to drive a car. You have to get a license to cut hair, to be a barber. You must have a license. But to carry a deadly weapon in the state of Indiana and carry it where you want, when you want, how you want, no license required. See, again, I guess giving money to, you know, make our schools more safe is one way to do it, but you can make our schools more safe if you address the real issues. You can put a Band-Aid on a broken leg, but it ain't gonna heal the problem. That's all I'm saying. We got real issues in Indiana, and until we choose to address them, you're just throwing money at a problem and not really trying to solve it. And finally, because in Indiana, all we do is fund the ACLU, because I love the ACLU. But that's what our tax dollars go toward now, is all the lawsuits that our American Civil Liberties Union of Indiana continues to fight for us. The ACLU of Indiana filed a lawsuit on behalf of a citizen journalist claiming Indiana's new 25-foot encroachment law violates his constitutional First Amendment constitutional right to observe and record the police. The new law, which went into effect July 1st, prohibits a person from knowingly and intentionally approaching within 25 feet of law enforcement officer after the officer has ordered the person to stop. The plaintiff, Donald Nicodemus, is a citizen journalist who lives in South Bend, Indiana, and monitors the activities of public safety personnel primarily in South Bend Police. Nicodemus regularly posts videos on his YouTube page, Freedom 2 Films, which has more than 23,000 subscribers. South Bend Police have enforced the new law against Nicodemus to prevent him from getting close enough to observe and record their activities. "The bridal discretion given to law enforcement officers by the new 25-foot law allows for and invites content and viewpoint-based discrimination," said Ken Falk, legal director of the ACLU. "This gives police officers unchecked authority to prohibit citizens from approaching within 25 feet of the officers to observe their actions, even if the actions of the citizen are not and will not interfere with the police." Okay, so just think, if in Minneapolis, when George Floyd had a knee on his neck for over nine minutes and his life was taken from him, if those folks who were sitting at the Cup Foods had to get back 25 feet, we may not have had enough evidence to convict Chauvin. And this is what's going to happen. Okay, one, we have police officers who are deathly afraid of melanated humans. Two, because we don't, we have a permitless carry law in the state of Indiana, law enforcement officers have no idea who does and who does not have a weapon. And because they're already scared of melanated people, and I'm not saying non-melanated people don't get shot, but it's at a disproportionate rate. They are now saying, if I do do something that's wrong and violate somebody else's civil rights, you can't even get close enough to document it. That way, when I go into court to defend myself, there's no evidence. Guys, these are real issues that are happening to real people every day. Little girls getting raped and getting pregnant, active school shooters, and law enforcement behaving in a way that is not with integrity. And our ability to observe those things are being taken away. But this is why, more than ever, each and every one of us needs to be civically engaged in our communities and in our state. And whatever it is that you do, whatever it is that you bring to the fight, whatever your skill set is, come. Because you may not think it's gonna happen to you today, but it can happen to you tomorrow or someone that you love. Guys, we cannot afford to sit on the sidelines, literally, while Ron DeSantis in Florida was saying African-American history has no educational value, fueling the racism in a person who had an automatic weapon and decided to just randomly shoot black people. There are consequences to actions. There are life and death consequences to actions. And if we do not wake up here in Indiana, if I cannot motivate each and every one of you to get involved at whatever level, whether it be a street policy or elected policy, I need y'all, and what I mean by street advocacy, I mean, be in the street with your bullhorn. I ain't talking about beating people down, because I need to clear that up, because I know people here and be like, oh, she's talking about going Rudy Giuliani on people. No, I'm not. Not at all. I want us to get involved, because this is our government. It's a citizen government. We, the people, are the largest words in our constitution, and we are the people that they are talking about. This is a citizen government, and we are the citizens. So y'all, get your head out the sand, quit pretending like it ain't gonna help into you, and get involved. All right, that is my rant for today. Now I get to show some love to my wonderful, wonderful sponsor, Booms Unique Boutique. Today's show is brought to you by Booms Unique Boutique. Click on the QR code. And for all Turn Left listeners, you can get a 10% discount on your order by using the code DEMOCRAT. Be sure to visit www.boomsuniqueboutique.com. And guys, we're coming up on the end of this election cycle. Do you have digital content? Are you looking for digital content? Then reach out to me, Black Pearl IT Solutions, Black Pearl Studios. I promise you, I am affordable. If you're a down-ballot candidate, I know you're not raising $30,000, $40,000, $50,000. I'm not trying to break you. Just let me help you out. You know me, all I want to do is elect more Democrats. So get with me, so I can help you create that digital content, that 30, 60, or 90-second commercial. All right? Now, I'm ready for my guests. I scheduled two, and maybe Erin will jump in at some point. I saw that she had tested her equipment out earlier, so maybe she'll jump in. We'll leave the gate open for her in case she can join us. But I gotta tell y'all something. I met this young man, I love going out to Hendrix County, it's our neighbor to the west, and Hendrix County has some amazing Democrats out there. Hendrix County, you think, oh, there's no Daze out there. Yes, there are. I have been out there since, probably since 2016. I've been visiting Hendrix County, talking to Democrats, and having great conversation, and people are motivated, and people are getting on the ballot. But one such individual, when you meet him, like, he's so unassuming. Like, he doesn't overpower, he just shows up with his red hair and a smile, and he's like one of the coolest cats you ever gonna meet. Y'all, give it up for my guest, all the way from Avon, Indiana. He is an elected Democrat in Avon, Robert Pope, he's Town Council at Large. Robert, welcome to the show.
Thanks, Dana. That's coolest cat. I don't think I can live up to that. Those are very kind words. Thank you.
You came in so smooth, they know what I'm talking about. How you been, my brother? How you been?
I've been great. I'm on the right side of the dirt. It's middle of campaign season, I'm up for reelection this year, and campaigning is always tough, but especially for a Democrat in a red area, but making it happen. It's going well.
So, okay, before we dive into all the things that you've been doing and what you will do, I do want to ask you some questions. Talk about what you guys are doing in Hendrix County, because I don't think people understand, just because your county or your location seems to be red, talk about the energy that you guys bring out there in Hendrix County.
Well, it's definitely challenging. There's really, I want to say there's really two Hendrix counties. There are the Eastern Edge, the three municipalities bump right up against Raceway, right up against Marion County, that's Brownsburg, Avon, and Plainfield. And then there's west of US, State Road 267, or here in Avon, it's Avon Avenue. Just west of that, you really start to shift into the more rural, more rural area. And of course, with rural, you tend to get the far-right leaning policy ideas, people who mostly elect Republicans. The Eastern Edge, I think, stands a chance. There's, I'm living evidence of a gap, an avenue for success. It lies within the highly populated areas, just like 170,000 people that live in Hendrix County. And if I remember, it's like 130,000 of them live in those three, in and around those three municipalities. So the population drops drastically after that US, State Road 267. So what are we doing? Well, we're trying to focus on those areas where Democrats potentially can get elected. I would love to see more Democrats focus from bottom up, but I can understand the motivation for most people to want to, like, make changes from, you know, high levels of power, so President, Governor on the down. I just, I ran in, I went into this campaign, my first campaign, excuse me, knowing that this job is different than what I think most people would want to see more Democrats, you know, being successful, you know, those high policy ideas. But down here is where you get people, you can change a person's mind.
Right.
As you said, like, I'm six foot three, 250 pounds, you know, big beard, hair, all this, like.
Hold up, wait a minute, hold up. You know I got a clown for just a minute. You said you 6'3", 250, right?
254, yes.
Your former friend, the orange menace, said he was 6'3", 250.
215, yeah.
And I'm gonna tell you, just from the neck up, I mean, you look a little bit more stealthy than homeboy. You think that 215 is truthful?
No, I've been six foot three and 215 pounds, and I felt like a twig. So he is not, he's a stump.
Yeah, I took it myself. This is what happens when you trigger an adult with ADD, you know what I'm saying?
That's right.
But you know what? And I love it. So how do you guys, how do you guys stay motivated? How do you help each other stay motivated?
On a wing and a prayer? No, it's challenging. You find that motivation where you can. You've got a stronghold, a group of Democrats who are either, you know, in the party and actively engaged within the party. You've got those on the fringes or on the outside that don't want to necessarily get involved with the party itself, but are trying to make sure, guys, the world is crazy now. We need to think differently, and we need to get some more of these other parties elected, whether it's Democrats or anyone else. But as we all know, there really is only two parties in America.
Right.
So there's, it's growing. You've got a shift in demographics.
Yep.
Anyone, I'm a little cautious to say this, but I feel like anyone under 45, 50 at this point is pretty dead set that they'll never vote for a Republican in their life.
Right.
And as those age out, those older generations age out, and your suburbs, Brownsburg, Avon, Plainfield, in my county's case, have those younger demographics move in, that color is just gonna shift to the left even more. So hope, hope is a big one, and just trying to bust our butts and trying to make change.
I love it.
I don't know if any of that works, but we're trying.
I love it. So Erin made it, yay! You didn't miss anything, except for my rant. You can listen to that later. My second guest on the show is running for Chesterton Town Council, District 2, Erin Collins. Erin, welcome to the show.
Hi, thanks so much for having me. I'm excited to be here and talk with you today.
I love it. I love it. Now, what county is Chesterton in?
Porter County.
Porter County. Okay, I was just talking to Robert. One of the things I was excited about having both of you guys on the show at the same time is because you guys are both on town councils. A lot of people think that there are only Democrats on city councils or in certain counties, on county councils, but our town councils are representing smaller communities. Some of them aren't necessarily super rural, but they're not also suburban, but they're more of our smaller towns. Talk about what you guys are doing up in Porter County to engage people, especially Democrats, to get involved, where it may not be as purple as we want it to be, but there's still an opportunity for Democrats to have impact in their community.
Yeah, absolutely. I think the big thing with Porter County is, for a long time, we really counted on the union vote. We were a union stronghold, which tended to be Democratic, and I think we, as a whole, kind of started to just assume that they were gonna stay with us and that we were gonna continue to have that support. And I think we've, over the last, you know, four or five years, especially through the ex-president's presidency, we lost some of that support. So I know right now, the Porter County Democrats, I serve as a union liaison for them. My dad's a retired steel worker, my husband's a sheet metal worker. So I understand the importance of not just having the unions, but the union members understanding their value and making sure that they feel like they're a part of the community and that Democrats have not forgotten about them, and that, you know, we really, we want to bring them back into the fold. So we've been really focusing a lot with meeting with different, you know, business agents of the different local unions, reaching out, getting into their meetings. I know as a candidate myself, I've been able to go to several different union meetings for some of the different locals, and it's been an amazing opportunity just to talk to people, to put my face in front of theirs, and to say, hey, I see you, you know, and I want to hear what you want. What do you see that's lacking in our community?
And I love that. You would've loved my rant. I'm trying to tell you. You would've loved my rant.
I wanted to hear it.
You know, the cool thing is, like, you know, we're witnessing, I remember in 2016 when I ran, and I would go speak at union halls, and I saw all the Trump signs, and it just blew my mind, because like you said, we were married. It was a relationship. And we, and sometimes I think individuals or, you know, party leaders or whoever, take certain groups of individuals for granted. And I think we took the unions for granted. And I remember, like, begging, like, can I come and talk to y'all? Can I, you know, because we, I needed to, I wanted to make sure that I explained, yes, I see you, but I want to tell you how these policies, that these people that you're gonna vote for are gonna hurt you. And that was like, are you having any success having those types of conversations with the union?
Yeah, we are. I know that what's really helped specifically is Senator Rodney Polk. I actually helped with his campaign last year, it's part of why I ended up running. But he helped to create a list, and it was of all the, you know, either anti-union legislation that had been passed in our state, or pro-union legislation that had been passed in our state over the last, I want to say it went back like 15, 20 years. And then, and it was all just fact, you know, this is the legislation, and this is the party that passed it, and this is how it affected you. Right-to-work was a big one. A lot of people didn't understand that it meant the right to work for less, not actually being a good thing. And so I think that opening their eyes and making them realize that, you know, Democrats are the people that are gonna help pass the infrastructure bills that are gonna keep you working. You know, one of the main things in my own campaign, I'm really pushing, is for Chesterton to pass a responsible bidder ordinance. We're one of the only communities in the area that doesn't have one, for people that don't know.
Yeah, tell me what that, did you say bidder as in B-I-D-D-E-R?
Yes. Yeah, so basically what that means, it's a safety net. Any infrastructure project, any project in general, typically that's over $100,000 to $150,000, that's being funded with taxpayer money. It would require that the bid go to specific contractors that have been vetted, that have the highest safety standards, that have an apprenticeship program. It doesn't specifically say union versus non-union. It just is a matter of fact that typically it's union companies and union contractors that have those standards.
Facts.
And so I know, I mean, I don't know about everybody, but I know for myself, I don't want to be going on a bridge that was put up by, you know, some company from Kentucky that came here because they were the cheapest bid. I just, I would rather.
I agree. I agree. All right, well, you know what? Y'all, I hear both of y'all. Y'all ready to talk about it. So I'm gonna be done with like my prelims, and because, again, I'm excited about our small towns. I'm excited about what, you know, people are saying, I am no longer just gonna be in this small town and let things happen. We're running, we're showing up, we're pushing the needle. So I wanted to just kind of, just give a shout out to both Avon and Chesterton, the small towns, that are electing Democrats, and there's an opportunity to, you know, move the needle. um, that are, are electing Democrats and there's an opportunity to, you know, move the needle. Alright, Robert, tell the people who you are and where you come from.
Um, well, uh, from west side of Indianapolis, um, uh, can't quite claim Hallville, but northwest of uh Sixteenth and Tibbs, born and raised. Um, joined the, joined the United States Army in two thousand when I graduated, um, spent four years on active duty, including um, the invasion of Iraq.
Hmm.
Um, ad- admittedly, um, grow- growing up, uh, patriotism, republicanism, all that was just normal, that was the thing, you, you didn't put too much thought into it, that's just what you were raised to do, so uh, ad- admittedly, my, my, my youth, my young past was, was, was just on that, that path. Um, my military experience, uh, and, and s- seeing how my brothers and sisters in arms were treated, um, lack of funds, lack of uh healthcare, things like that, uh, as well as uh, just growing up and paying attention on my own, you know, doing my own critical thinking, really said, you know, this, what was normal, what was this normal way of life is not.
Right.
It, it doesn't have to be that way.
Right.
You know, there's a whole nother option, we can, we can, we can vote for other people, we can, we can vote for other ideas. Um, and uh, admittedly, uh, for years, it was just, I, I've done my service, um, you know, this is somebody else's job, so I'll, I'll let somebody, you know, somebody smarter, somebody trained in political science, whatever, do these things. And like, I imagine many people, twenty sixteen scared the, the Jesus out of me, um, when, when we elected Trump. And I, I would legit had the thought of, really, I've gotta do this, like, I've, I've gotta, I've gotta stand up and take on this extra service, I, I've gotta, I've gotta stand up and be somebody, be, be someone who does this, so. Um, twenty eighteen, um, I volunteered for uh Toby Beck's campaign for uh Indiana fourth.
I hope she comes back.
Uh, congratulations, she's not in the state anymore, but yes, I, I hope she would too. Um, I, I volunteered for her campaign and, and during that process, uh, my goal was maybe one day, uh, you know, when I'm old enough and mature enough and experienced, then maybe I'll run for some, some kinda office. Learning on her campaign, you know, taught me a lot very quickly, uh, but I guess I had my head on my shoulders and, and one of the, of the volunteer coordinators said, you know, we, we really need uh more Democrats running for uh, down ballot spots, have you ever thought about running for, for an office? Yeah, yeah, sure, maybe, but one day.
Right.
That, I, I got talked into running for uh Avon Town Council, one of our ward seats, uh, this was in twenty eighteen. Um, unfortunately Toby's uh campaign started to flounder and so I, I wasn't being tasked with a lot, so I, I really started to focus on my own campaign, I invested a lot of time in just learning how to do the job. As, as silly as that sounds, just, just learning how, what, 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 what authority does a town council have? Or what, what does it, what, what is the key crux of the game, as I like to call it? By the way, that's, I gotta gain two votes, I, I, I'm one of three, I gotta get three votes total.
Right.
Uh, that, that's how you, that's how you make things happen.
Right.
Um, uh, so twenty eighteen, um, I sort of really focused, focusing on my campaign three, four months out. Um, and I lost by fifty-nine votes, um, point eight-five percent of the, of the total vow, uh, total vote tally, uh, absolutely unheard of, uh, here in Henders County. Um, I wa- I felt done at the time, I was like, I'm good, I obviously am not, I'll go volunteer back, you know, I'll go be a good volunteer helper. And uh, everybody, and, and I mean Democrats and Republicans alike, were like, no, 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 you're, you're on to something. You, you can't, you can't walk away after point eight-five percent, less than one percent of the vote. Uh, luckily enough, the very next year, twenty nineteen was a, was a municipal year and we had two at-large seats. Um, I carried the momentum from the previous year, um, kinda uh, uh, learned from what I did well, what I didn't do well, changed some things and uh, obviously I, I won one of the two seats. Um, here we are four years down the road and I wanna say four years of uh, a, a lot of hard work, um, and a lot of success. And if I can use any of that to uh, to play the trumpet for this party, um, that I, I feel I was successful in m- my mission for the party, which was to show people that Democrats can govern, that we are capable of, um, we're, we're not crazy leftists and these are, these are absurd ideas. And no, I, I, I know how to make sure your, your, our, our budget is sustainable. Um, I, I am, I can, I can prove to you that we can um, balance livability, cost of living, this, the local economy, but still at the same time making sure your services are taking the, the, the public safety and, and other services are taken care of, so. Um, I feel like I've done a good job, eh, especially in that regard, um, and, and hey, I, I'm, I, I know some of my supporters would be very mad at me if I didn't get this uh little blast in, uh, I am the only elected Democrat uh, uh, in, in the county, but on my council, there are four other Republicans. And uh, three out of my first four years, I've been elected to council leadership.
Wow.
My second year, I was elected to the vice president, uh, and the, this year and last year, I was elected to the council president.
Come on.
And I, and I don't, I, I, I'm in no way gonna try and say like, that's because I'm special or, or that I'm, I, I'm.
Sounds like you are.
Anything like that, ho- honestly, it's, it's purely, I've, I've done the work, that, that's, that's, that's it. Like, I, I've just been willing to learn, go to these places, be present, uh, be empathetic, be, uh, be able and, and uh, uh, willing to be spoken to and listened and, and that goes a long way.
Yeah, I, I think, and, and that's successful, and I, I'm gonna ask you later, you know, um, ha- those, those communication skills that, that it took to get some of those Republicans to vote for you, but before we get there, Erin, tell the people who you are and where you come from.
Hello, um, so Erin Collins, I am running for Chesterton Town Council District Two. I grew up in Chesterton, um, I lived in Jackson Township, which is probably about ten miles out from the town center of Chesterton. Um, I went to all Dunland schools, went to Chesterton High School. Um, when it came time to buy my first house, I knew this is where I wanted to be. Um, and I just, I love our community, it's, it's a very uh artistic uh place to be, the people are fantastic. Um, I started getting involved, it was, it was twenty sixteen that, that did it. I, as the daughter of a, a union steel worker and, um, you know, the wife of a union sheet metal worker, uh, I've been political pretty much forever, I went to my first union rally when I was eleven years old with my dad.
Come on now.
Yeah, so it, you know, I'm blue through and through, um, and I, I saw in twenty sixteen, things were changing at a pace that I was scared. And I saw a lot of people, you know, you see online, you have the keyboard warriors that talk a lot, but, you know, what are you doing?
Right.
And, you know, I don't have any kids of my own and, you know, I'm a hairstylist by trade and I had time. And I actually found this group, Nasty Women of Porter County.
All the nasties.
Oh, yeah, those are my girls, uh, and, and I started getting involved with them, we did some remodeling for a women's shelter um, in Portage, which is also in Porter County. Um, and I kinda led the team on the interior, so I, you know, we painted the walls, we did caulking, we put new trim in, we got new bunk beds. We, we really just transformed all of the six rooms that they had into tranquil spaces, you know, for women to start over again. I think that it's important, you can't, you know, you can't be expected to, to recoup and to heal um, in a place that's not giving you those healing vibes, so.
Yeah.
Um, I got involved with them and then I started, it just kinda tiered in, into political realm. I started attending more meet and greets with campaign um leaders. I was asked if I wanted to be a precinct committee person, um, it was the season of me saying yes, uh, so.
Okay, season.
Yeah, I said yes, I said, yeah, sure, let's do this. Um, we ended up having a caucus, um, Karen Italian was retiring early and so um, that was my first real taste of, you know, the political machine and, and understanding what all goes into these different, you know, types of things, caucuses and stuff, um, and I, I ended up standing behind Todd Connor, who is a dear friend of mine.
I know Todd.
You know Todd, okay, yeah, so you know, he's, he's fantastic. Um, and I just saw that the more I got involved, the more change I was creating and the more people around me were starting to ask questions and like, hey, what are you doing and, oh, tell me about this and, and I felt like I was able to reach more people. Um, so when Todd lost the caucus and Rodney won, um, I was, it was, one of the first things I did was call Rodney and congratulate him and ask him how I can help, because at the end of the day, Rodney is an amazing, amazing.
Yeah, absolutely freaking fantastic, I'm just gonna throw that out there and he's gonna, if he hears this, he's gonna know why I said that. Uh, yeah, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, he's so, he's great, um, and so I jumped in and I started helping um, with Rodney's campaign, knocking doors and um, I had him help me actually start, well, restart the Dunland Democratic Committee. Um, so we got that going in all of Dunland area because we're Chesterton, Burns Harbor, um, and Porter.
Okay.
Considered the Dunland area, um, and so I wanted to create a space where Democrats could come together and we could give them information about all these incredible candidates and make sure that they had the knowledge and that they had the information that they needed. Um, and Rodney was a big help with that, he, he really helped us to kinda get set up and give the, the kinda kick in the butt that we needed. Um, so I was chair for that organization, um, for the first, you know, year of it, and then we held elections at the turn of the year and I decided to run for town council, um, at the behest of, of Rodney and some other people, they were like, hey, you know, you should, you should get more involved, you should.
I love it.
You should continue going, have you ever thought about it? And I was like, oh my gosh, I'm a hairstylist, I'm not.
What, what, what?
Not a lawyer, like.
No, 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 right? No, there, I, I remember when I ran for office the first time and I was like trying to figure out, well, shoot, okay, let me go read the Constitution cause I need to know what the requirements are, do I have enough education? Do I have, you know, the only requirements are residency. That's it, so what you, what you're trained to do, what you're formally trained to do has nothing, in fact, I like when people aren't lawyers. Because going to law school, it makes you think a specific way and if all of our lawmakers are lawyers, they're gonna be thinking about things the exact same way, with some nuances, obviously, I'm not saying that they're all the same. But your mind, your, your mind is trained to think a certain way, whereas if you're an artist, a hairstylist, an IT person, your mind thinks differently and, and that's what we need, we need a kaleidoscope of, I'm so glad you didn't give in to the doubt. Uh, cause the text women, they take us seven times before we say yeah, how many times it take them? How many times they had to ask you, Erin?
Oh, I would like at least four or five.
Okay, at least you didn't get to the seven, cause they say the average is seven.
Yeah.
Okay, guys, I mean, God, this conversation is so cool, um, I wanna ask Robert, because you are the incumbent. Talk about what it was like to build those relationships across the aisle when you literally, you were in a super minority. I mean, it's one, one, you know, one in four, there's five of y'all and, you know, it's one in four, how did you build those relationships? And after, after having built those relationships, talk about the things that you are most proud of that you were able to get accomplished.
Uh, yeah, sir, uh, a lot of bite my tongue, um, a lot.
I love honesty, I love it.
Um, it's, I, I'm a, I love, uh, I love books, one of my favorite is um, How to Win Friends and Influence People. I think one of the best books to try and teach anyone who wants to maybe get into politics. And um, one of the key things from there is just be open and willing and listen to a person. Goes a long way to letting them trust you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm a firm believer in psychological safety on a team and being able to work together with people. Um, and so if I can have you trust me by just standing there and listening and bite my tongue, um, it was worth a shot and um, it's, it's worked. Um, it's, it's part of my character, but it, it worked with these, my, my four, well, five counterparts over the years.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so how, how did I go to build those relationships, kept quiet the things that didn't matter, bit, bit my tongue on the things that, I say didn't matter.
Pick your battles, pick your battles.
Yep, pick your battles, down here, um, the, the, the key issues that most people wanna delineate Democrats versus Republicans, just I, I have no authority to touch.
Right.
I'm here worried about filling potholes, I'm here worried about making sure you've got uh, uh, an affordable house. I'm here trying to make sure you've got a, a decent paying job. Um, those that are here locally within your community, I'm, I'm here to make sure you've got good, clean uh, safe parks, things like that. So I, none of those boil up to those D versus R issues, as I like to call them, um, so eh, pick your battles, that was, that was the best way to, as this, I shouldn't, I shouldn't have just led with that.
But, but now, but after you built the relationships, you still had to get some things done. What, what was the thing that you're probably the most proud of that you were able to get, get accomplished?
Um, getting, silly as this sounds, getting my counterparts for us to work together.
Oh.
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm sure you're familiar with the open door law. Um, it's, it's very challenging for a legislative body to communicate with each other, especially when they're limited, so for five of us, three of us essentially can't be in the same room together or we're breaking the law, as, there's, there's, there's times, times and places that we can, but um, it, it's very, you, you can't, it's very challenging to build consensus.
Sure.
Um, and I, I'm, I'm a team player, I love trying to collaborate and build consensus, so my efforts mostly were talking to one council member one-on-one, talked to another council member one-on-one and I quickly learned that that wasn't happening between them.
Hmm, oh, interesting.
Do, do the math, um, they're, they're of the same party and, and I'm not, and they're not talking, it seemed absurd to me. Um, but um, I, I don't wanna say like I took advantage, but I, okay, if this is the game we're playing, if this is the, the arena that I find myself in, this is what I need to do to get us to get three votes, to get things moved forward, this is what I'll do. Um, it's been successful, again, as mentioned, vice president, my second year, council president, last two years, um, all through communication, collaboration, empathy, listening, compassion. Um, and as I mentioned, a lot of bite my tongue.
So how much of your military training has helped shape you uh, in, into this politician? I'm curious.
Uh, I, I will only say from like a value standpoint, so um, the, the, the army had a, 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 an acronym, LDRSHIP, spelled out brokenly, leadership, uh, loyalty, duty, respect, selfless service, honor, integrity, personal courage. Um, those are the, supposed to be the army's values, um, and I, I, I ate that propaganda, I ate that portion of it. Um, and so for me, I've tried to, and, you know, try to um, act those out. Um, and I, I think that's my character, I, I think that's just who I am naturally now, um, and so from that aspect, I've been shaped in that form, but I'm, I'm trying to build this into this way, cause I was, I was laughing when you guys were talking about you're a hairstylist, we need hairstylists, I promise you. We, I, I am, I, I use this all the time, I kid you not, I am trained to be a software engineer and a soldier. I promise you neither one of those have anything to do with what goes on in the town council. That I, I have to surround myself with people way smarter than me. I have to surround myself with people who went to school just to know how to build and maintain a road. I have to surround myself with people who know how to uh, uh, build a budget, maintain and operate a budget. I have to surround myself with experts on how to plan a city. Um, and my professional experience, soldier or software does help from time to time, but very, very rarely.
Wow.
Very rarely.
I, I love, I love, ooh, I love the way you express yourself about what it is to be on a town council, your town council, like you, there is such a pride in listening to you tell your story, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm deviating, okay, okay, and then Erin. You know, when you win.
Yes.
You're hearing, you're hearing his philosophy on, on sometimes having to bite your tongue and things like that. What are some of the things, you mentioned the bitter um, ru- rule, law, clause? Um, but what are some, what are some of the other things that you hope to accomplish um, once you're elected to your Chesterton Town Council?
Yeah, so um, so far, just without being elected, um, actually, in June, um, I put forward a resolution for Chesterton to recognize June as Pride Month officially. Um, we had some vandalism take place with, you know, just idiotic hate. Um, and I wanted to send a clear message that that was not gonna be tolerated, um, so I'd like to build on that. Um, I'd also, we have a few, there's a Coffee Creek Improvement Plan, I'm, I'm really big about our parks. I think that um, we've got beautiful, beautiful area right now, but I think that we can do more with what we have. Um, there's Coffee Creek Park that's kinda right behind where our downtown is and there's an improvement plan that, you know, it's been being talked about for a couple of years and. it's been being talked about for a couple of years. And, and I'm learning that government moves very slowly. So that's, you know, I, I definitely would like to see some serious movement on that. I also want to increase our parking. It's a big issue in Chesterton. As much as I want to say, I want more businesses to come into our downtown, which, you know, I do understand a downtown, you know, thriving downtown economy is the backbone of our community.
Right.
We don't have anywhere for people to park. So finding some creative solutions for funding, using TIF money the way it should be used.
Right.
And just, yeah, you know, I've, I've really been learning a lot these past few months. Kind of, I like what, what he was saying, surrounding myself with people that know more than I do and learning what the job is. Sitting down with people that all they do are taxes and they can been able to explain to me where Chesterton's money comes from, how those numbers are actually, you know, where the numbers come from and, and who dictates that, you know, sending your budget downstate and then the state has to approve it. And just really learning all of that inner working information has been, has been huge.
I love it. I love it. Guys, if you are liking what these candidates are talking about, please click on their Act Blue links. Their Act Blue links right there. Donate to their campaigns. Five, 10, $15, whatever you can. Just give a little bit because they, they still need to raise money to, to buy water for volunteers, whatever it is that they need. Just click, just give, give a few dollars, right? Just help these candidates out. Because I'm telling you what, I am motivated by these two candidates right now. I'm fired up. All right. Now, Robert, you're going to be reelected. It's going to happen. What do you want to work on next year or next term?
I love your positivity. So diversifying our tax base has been a thing that like I've, I've definitely focused on over the last four years. And as we were kind of discussing beforehand, I, I want to give this shout out to. Just since I've been elected, we have had $503 million worth of investments spent inside the town of Avon. From road improvements to buildings for, for businesses to businesses starting up or coming into the community. 503 have been spent, 503 million just since I've been on the town council. We've got a new project coming to build our downtown. We're only a 28-year-old town. That's all the older we are. We don't have a town center or downtown. This is one of the very first projects I got to work on after I was elected for building a downtown. There's going to be another half a billion dollars invested just in just in that project. So how, what's that to going forward? Across the nation, what is one of the, one of the key poverty, key pillars to poverty across the nation that's impacting affordable housing? We, we have had a struggle in this community in the past of just being a bedroom community where all we were doing was growing residential. The state tax caps really made that almost impossible.
Thanks Mitch Daniels.
Love it or hate it, it changed the rules and the, and, and the way that communities can grow. So to be financially sustainable, to be able to provide new services, to be able to do any of the things that a community, people, residents of a community want their community to be. We had to grow our tax base to the 2% and 3%. That's agriculture, rentals and, and commercial industrial, right? We had to, we had to grow that tax base. We have dramatically focused on that in the last four years. I, I don't want to say we're stopping on that, but you can't ever pull really hard on one lever. And for nearly two decades, we were really pulling hard on residential. We let up on that a little bit. We pulled pretty hard on commercial industrial. And I don't want to let up on it too much, but I have to start thinking that we now need to make sure we have affordable housing. That means enough homes for our workforce. Labor Day, right? We need to make sure that those who are making the money or making the product, you're doing the thing, have an affordable place to live. And the solution to just bust them in from Marion County is not, it's, it's not humane. It's not good governance. It's not, it's not good. So.
Well, wait a minute. And we can't even, wait a minute, we can't even bust them in because, you know, our Donut Counties, they don't actually like to have public transportation. So there's no, there's no going from Marion County to Hamilton, Boone, Hendricks, Hancock, or Johnson County. So it just is not happening. Because, you know, we, when we Marion County people, we, we commit crimes and, and armed burglary or burglary, we always steal the 72-inch television and take it home on the bus. Because that's, that's what we do.
That's right. I, I want to, I want to make it clear. It's, I, I, it's not our, I want, it's not our fault. It's not the Donut County's fault. That's actually your lovely super majority state legislature.
Yes, it is.
Will not allow transportation tax dollars to cross county lines. We have a public transportation line just south of us in Plainfield. They're literally the blue line or red line within Indy, within Marion County, goes to the county line, stops, people get off, walk across raceway, hop on another bus to get out to their job.
That's ridiculous. It's almost like the state legislature are just a bunch of individuals who don't want us to work together as communities, right? They don't want collaboration. They don't, I mean, my God, I listen to, you are saying the exact same thing I heard, you know, six years ago when I was up in Fishers. And the folks up in Fishers were saying they wanted more diversity in restaurants. Really? You want, you want, you want the, you know, our, our, our Indian community to come up and cook in your community, but you don't want them to live there?
Don't want them to live there.
You know, because you're not making it. So you, and affordable housing is something that I've heard ever, every, every candidate this municipal season has talked about affordable housing. So it seems like now, since we, you know, from a municipal level, we could only do as much as we can. It's time for the state legislature to kick in and use some of that surplus to help these counties out since, you know, they don't want us crossing county lines to help each other. Just, just this craziness, just craziness. I'm really excited about you two because, you know, again, the focus today is about our small towns. The focus is how we as Democrats can have major impact in our small town community. You don't have to be in Indianapolis. You don't have to live in Fort Wayne. You don't have to live in South Bend. You can go, you don't have to be in Lake County. You can live wherever you want and have impact in the community that you live in, regardless of the makeup. If you come correct, like Erin did with the union thing, or if you just learned to bite your tongue like Robert did, there's a way for us to have impact. So as you guys are thinking about your towns, and I, I'll let, we've kind of gone back and forth, but I don't mind us just chopping it up a minute. As you think about your towns, one of the things you both have talked about is increasing your downtown and making it more of a destination spot. When you're talking to your constituents, are they telling you that they desire these things? Are they telling you that, yo, I, I don't want to go to Indianapolis. I don't want to go to Elkhart or South Bend. I want to stay here and, and have theater. And are, are they telling you this? And articulate to us what you're hearing from your constituents?
Yeah. I mean, I know for, for myself, when I've talked to people, that's exactly what they're asking for. For us, it's Valpo is the closest, you know, city to us. And they're tired of having to go to Valpo for everything. They want more restaurants. They want more things for the teenage kids and the youth to do. And they also want more for seniors to do. I think that's, that's been honestly, the number one thing that I've come across canvassing and knocking doors, talking to people. I'm talking to seniors, retired people, and they don't feel like there's anything geared towards them in the community.
Wow.
So yeah, that's going to be a big push for me, making sure that, that we, we have resources available and there are programs that are out there. But if people don't know about them, then they're not doing any good. So just getting that information out there. But yeah, it's definitely something that people are talking about. Robert?
Yeah, absolutely. I think the earliest survey we have results from, I want to say it was like 2008, 2010, somewhere around that. So it's, it's been on our residents, like number one list of, hey, this is what is missing in our community as a downtown, a town center for, 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 well, almost for the entire, the town's entire existence. It just so happens, we've finally had the wherewithal to start pushing something through to try to make something happen. It, it takes a big investment, the dollars, I just threw out half a billion dollars to try to create something for this community. But I want, I'm, I'm saying that to tie it into what we just talked about affordable housing. You don't build a downtown unless you have dense population around it to support it.
Right.
You, you don't have those walkable mom and pop shops, walkable commercial trails, things like that. You don't have that small downtown feel unless those businesses can operate with high population sitting right on top of them. They're able to walk out their door, walk right down to where they want to go and, and, and get their things. So we've had an absolute big demand for years. We're just now starting to, we, I believe we are still supposed to put shovels in the ground before the end of this year. So.
I love it. I love it. That's, that's great. You, I mean, guys, you guys have got me motivated. And it's like, it's already an hour. And I'm like, I want to just keep talking to y'all. But I know I can't do that to my listeners. It's going to be like, look, Dana Black. Listen. All right. Erin, tell the people where they can find you.
Oh, where can you find me? Well, if I'm not knocking on your door.
Love it.
A lot of canvassing lately. I do have an event coming up on September 23rd at 219 Tap Room. It's right downtown Chesterton. It's actually my birthday. So I'm having a big birthday celebration, inviting everybody to come out, have some great food, some live music. There will be a silent auction. It's at 5:30. And look me up on Facebook, Committee to Elect Erin Collins for Chesterton Town Council. You'll find everything there.
And, and you have a flyer for this event? Because if, if you do, I'll, I'll stick it up on my, my show so people can see it the next time they come, so they know to see you.
Great. Yeah. I'll, I'll email it over to you.
I love it. I love it. And Robert, do you have any event? Tell the people where they can find you.
I've got a website, Pope4, the number four, avon.org. My Facebook page, Facebook slash Robert Pope4, the number four, Avon as well. You'll find me, if, if you don't find me there, you'll find me knocking on your door here in Avon. We've got a number of events coming up. I've got a podcast, a local grassroots group does a podcast will be on there. I think next month, we're, they're, they're trying to set that up with all three candidates. You'll find me at our HH dinner for our county party, local dim county party. That's next week. And of course, just stop me as I'm shopping because I live in your community. I'm a regular human being that has, that makes mistakes and goes shopping at the same places we do. So.
I love it. This was a fantastic conversation, guys. Like I could literally like tack on another half an hour and we could still find plenty of things to talk about. But I try to keep it, try to keep it. Thank y'all so much for taking time. Today on Turn Left, we had Robert Pope, who is currently serving as the Avon Town Council at large and is running for reelection this year. And then we have taken the union-loving Erin Collins with the help of Senator Rodney Poll, and we put her on the ballot to run for Chesterton Town Council. Guys, again, if you liked what they talking about, I know I did. Please click on their donate links. Don't give them five, 10 bucks, whatever it is. Because I'm telling you, these are the kind of Democrats we want to elect all over our state. I mean, take heed, take note, understand what you see in front of you. Okay? Like, I, I recognize, I'm, I can't go to every county and the message, me and Robert can say the exact same thing, and it's not going to register the same way coming from him as it does coming from me. Now, I know we want to be all about what we want to be about, but understand your audience, know how to talk to them, and remember how to convey our message of who we are as Democrats. Because they not, again, everybody ain't going to receive me the same. And, but that means when I can't be received, then you send in Erin. And when I, Erin can't be received, you send in Robert. And that's why we are the big tent. Because we can go into any community and anywhere in 92 counties and have a Democrat represent those communities. Okay? I, I get fired up about that. Because people get, people get offended with me when I be telling them, no, sometimes I need my white boys. I need my white boys to go places I can't freaking go. I need them to stand up for who we are as Democrats in places where they're not going to hear me. They'll hear him. He's 6'3", 250. They gonna hear him. They gonna hear him. All right, y'all. Hey, first, before we go tonight, I want to again, ask everybody, Erin mentioned that her, in her town, she's working to, you know, expand LGBTQ plus rights and awareness up there. And I really, really thank her as a member of the community. But more importantly, y'all know I sit on the border of Trinity Haven. Next week is our Homecoming Bash. If you have not purchased your tickets already, please, please do so. Because we, Trinity Haven is the only program in the state of Indiana where we provide short-term and semi-long-term housing for LGBTQ plus youth who are at risk of homelessness. Yes, because there are some clowns out there that have babies and they want to toss them out before they're legal. They do that. I know. It's crazy, right? But, but, but we always need money. Because to do this program requires commitment and dollars. So please buy a ticket to our Homecoming Bash. But I do have some good news I want to share. We were invited to participate in a competition for a donation from TCC, which they're a telecom company up in Fishers. We found out at the beginning of the month that we made the finals. And I was right alongside Jenny White, as she eloquently and professionally and passionately told our Trinity Haven story to the panel of voters who would decide on who would get this $100,000 mega grant. Yesterday, we went to the CCC, TCC Business Rally up at the downtown at the Western. And there were seven finalists. Y'all, shout out to TCC. They gave all seven finalists $100,000. All seven. So Trinity Haven was the recipient. Not only that, not only that, before they told us who the prize winner was, they said, we don't want anybody to go away empty-handed. They gave everybody, every organization an opportunity to choose between three different types of vehicles. Because every, every organization talked, every nonprofit organization talked about transportation being an issue. So they were like, yo, we don't want to just stop there. We want to also help you guys do the work that you're doing. Here's a, here's a, a situation of, I'm not advocating for any, any organization other than the work that they do. Right? I don't care about whether or not they a telecom company better than Verizon or, I don't care. What I do care about is that they are putting, they're putting their money back into the community. They're up in Fishers, but they're putting the money back into the community. And they have a charity program. Guys, we were so blown away. It takes so much to run Trinity Haven and all the other programs. Coburn Place, Hunter Black Men. I can't remember them all. Those are the, the three that I remember. But we were so stoked and so excited. I, I almost wanted to bust out in the seams because we work so hard for our community, especially when so many people work hard to tear us down. And that, my friends, that is what love looks like. That's what love looks like. All right. Y'all, still got shows all the way up to election. Thank you so much for tuning in. Robert, Erin, you guys were fantastic today. Great freaking show. Great show. All right. I will holler at y'all next week. Peace.